And I call a meeting to order at this time, and please know that all board members and superintendent present. If you would at this time, join me in a moment of silence before we continue. Thank you. If you're right, would you stand with me as we say the pledge of the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And before we continue, back as y'all know, Mr. Hurt lost his wife. And when I talked to Mr. Hurt, I asked him what the board could do and support, and I suggested the board donating money to the Alzheimer's Association, and he shared with me, and he thought that would be very appropriate. So we did that, and I was beginning to wonder when I was ever going to hear back from him. Jake never declared the bankruptcy thing, but we got this letter, and I used, because I wanted it to be from the school board, from the Alzheimer's Association came here, and I put your son, I don't know if he's received anything yet or not, on there. But I will read all of it, but I'll just read this much. We've received your tribute gift of $140 in memory of Jan Hurt on February 22, 2021, and we want to let you know how much we appreciate your support of Alzheimer's Association.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. You are very welcome. All right, at this time, item C is to adopt the agenda of entertaining motion.
I think motion we adopt is good.
Mr. Hurry made the motion, go ahead, second.
Second.
Mr. Hur, is there any discussion? All in favor, let me know what I've looked at here, and all board members were in favor. Item number two deals with the new superintendent standards. I'll turn it over to Mr. Stoll.
So as I shared with you at the last board meeting, one of the things is my responsibility is going through new superintendent trainings to make sure we looked at all seven of superintendent standards. We looked at standards one and two at the last working session. So today, we make you aware of standards three and four. Standard three is cultural leadership, and I pulled up for you, if you'd like to read through that to see anything that is there relative to the expectations. This is about us developing a connection with our district and our community to make sure that there's a solid cultural experience for everyone involved, from the staff to the students to our community. And then human resources, it's ensuring that we are creating a good line of, excuse me, recruitment, induction, support, evaluation in that system. You all have asked me to look at the HR side of things, and we started that process, and we've been doing that and continue to do that. None of these standards will go away after this first year. It'll be something that we will work with moving forward. You all have the opportunity to determine if you want me to target particular areas, all seven, you know, that's entirely up to you all. So however we need to move forward with that. Attached in the KSBA site also is my professional growth plan that you all approved back at the beginning of the year, so you're welcome to go back in and look at that at any time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. All right, item number three is to review the regular board meeting agenda, and let's see, where we going to start, Mr. Stoll?
We'll start wherever you want to start. So I'm going to pull it up for you real quickly. Any questions that you have around the first sections, we're happy to address. I will point out that since Friday, we were able to confirm something, so if you look under the recognitions, we actually have three recognitions that we'll do Thursday night. One, the first two are our normal teacher of the month and students of the month, but we're also going to be recognizing the Lancaster Elementary Governor's Cup team for their regional win, and so they will be here to receive some recognition from you all as well. That's such a great honor, and from their parts, we want to make sure that you all knew that. I appreciate Coach Hur reminding us that we needed to address that, so you'll have three recognitions. So that's really the only change in that area. Under SBDM minutes, you'll note if you look, that in the month of January, the middle school did not have a meeting and could not form a forum. They tried on a couple of different occasions and could not do that, so that's why you won't see minutes for them. You'll see under, at this point, we've not heard from anyone who has asked for audience comments, and of course, you all are always entitled to have comments under your section. Under my section, you'll take, be able to look at personnel changes, and then we will walk through, not really walk through, but remind everyone what the strategic plan calendar is, and that begins tomorrow. And it's available for everybody to see. It's every two weeks, starting at four o'clock. We've scheduled five of those, and we hope to accomplish the plan in that five-week period, or five-session period. And then a reminder also of the facilities plan, meetings that you all have asked us to schedule, March 22 at Lancaster, March 23 at Paintlick, and March 25 at Campick Robinson. Those will all begin at six in the evening. It was in the newspaper this past week, front page, so we'll be blasting again on social media, making sure that information is out there. Next thing that we would address is the treasures report. So Stacy?
Okay, if you all look at the smaller sheet, the February financial report, we're going to see a total ending balance for February of approximately $8.9 million. And when we compare that to the prior year in February, we're at about $2.3 million. And as you can tell by looking down below the comparison, about $2 million of that is attributed to the general fund. So if you flip over to the following two pages, I'm just going to go into some little bit of detail about the ones that have the largest variance. Our general fund cash balance is 6.4 million, or I'm sorry, 6.6 million. The result of the increase in funds when compared to last year is due to our COVID relief funds along with some decreased spending due to virtual learning. Our special revenue fund, the variance noted is approximately 200,000, and as noted in the past, this balance fluctuates month to month due to changes in grant activity. Our school activity fund was not required to be reported in prior year, which explains that variance, so that cash balance is 308,000. And then our next largest variance was the food service fund that was down by approximately 293,000 when compared to prior year, and that coincides with our spend down plan. So our remaining funds, the district activity fund, the capital outlay, the building, construction, debt service, community education, and trust funds, they all had minimum variances when compared to last year. So in addition to this sheet, you also have my monthly financial report that should have notes on it. It just kind of gives you a little bit more detail of each fund if you want to dig in a little bit deeper. That's all I have. I'll be happy to answer questions.
Yeah, I appreciate all the detailed report. I get highlighted everything.
Thank you. Can you read my hand argument better?
Well, I wondered what matches PSB.
Balance sheet.
Next thing we'll look at is your bonding potential. And as you all know, we've been waiting for an interest rate change, and you're able to see that the interest rate change on that this month moved us back from 29 million bond to 25 million. And the loan difference really is the interest rate. You see it went from a 1.76 to 2.42, and that's the highest percentage that you see on this sheet since we had started sharing this information with us. So they'll continue to provide that on a monthly basis to keep informed of where we are relative to that bonding potential. Then you receive bills each month or each week to approve, and we simply place that on the agenda to make sure that we've accommodated what we're supposed to accommodate there. Under the consent agenda, you have the minutes from February's 15th working session and the 23rd regular session, which was a delayed one. We'll ask you to approve the treasures report that you just heard, and two fundraisers, one for Paintlick Elementary, one for Campick Robinson. The next two items, the first one is approval of the ESRA assurance funds, or ESRA II assurance funds. It's the amount of money that we've talked about recently in the last few months. We're going to receive about $2.59 million. And in order to receive that, we have to answer some assurances and have a spending plan. If we put those in place, then these funds will be available to us beginning April 1st. So we are actually meeting this week to make sure we have that spending plan. It's not a detailed spending plan that says each penny is going to here, but there are assurances that we will go through and that we will say yes to, and we will need you all to say that you're agreeing with us that those are things that the district will do. Inside that is a 15% setback that KDE has held on to, and if we spend, or I say 15%, they have a setback or a holdback that they have from the ESRA II funds. And if we spend 85% of our funds on direct services, then we would be eligible for $75 per child that we have based on ADA. So that's $183,000. The only issue that we'll have around that is making sure that we comply with that percentage of 85. It does limit some of the things that you could do once we do that. And I think all of you understand that when we're dealing with money coming from different sources like that, there are limits that are placed on us around that. There could be a point where we would arrive at a spot where we were saying it would be smarter for us to spend money on something that's not a direct service, but at this time, we're not aware of what that would be. And so we're going to say yes to that assurance. If we ever need to come back and change that, we will make you aware of that.
In order to pay, this money can be spent on?
So this money, based on the federal level, could be spent on a ton of things. At the state level, that's where the pullback has occurred. So as an example of something that could be spent at the federal level, but we can't do it at the state level and count it as a direct service, is work on our air handlers, I mean, on our air units. So if we wanted to put bipolar ionization in each of those, we can do that with these funds, but that won't count as part of the direct services. So that could take your numbers to a spot where you start to push against that 85% or that 15% depending on how you want to look at it. We can use it for salaries. We can use it for software. We can't use it for hardware. So we couldn't purchase Chromebooks with it, but if there was a software program or package that we wanted, we could do that. Again, we can use it on personnel. We can use it for programs like preschool. We can use it for items like our learning recovery that we're talking about using, and that's where we feel like we'll use a good chunk of the money to go into that area. We'll also look at things that we could do that might shore up the general fund. If there are some things that we can move over and that we might normally have paid for with the general fund, we may pay for it with this in order to, again, secure the general fund at a higher level. We also know that last week, $1.9 trillion was allocated for what we'll assume will be ESRA III, and we have not received actual numbers, but KDE has suggested that that amount of money that will be coming into the state will be twice the amount of this last one. So if you extrapolate from that, potentially doubling, we could be looking at another $5 million that would come in. We don't know exactly what the limits will be on that. We'll certainly watch that. The ESRA II money has to be spent by September of 2023, and we believe that if ESRA III comes out, it will be at the same timeframe. So that amount of money would have to be allocated and used during that block of time.
So it could have been used for all day preschool?
Yes, and we'll address that in just a few minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's good. You're taking it the right way.
Mr. Stoll, I was hoping that you would be able to share with us, and you may not have it developed yet, and that's okay, but the learning recovery piece of that, or just a breakdown of how you anticipate that 85% being spent in direct services or otherwise. Would you be able to share with the board a report of the details?
Governor's Cup team for their regional win. And so they will be here to receive some recognition from you all as well. That's such a great honor and from their parts, we want to make sure that you all knew that. I appreciate Coach Hart reminding us that we needed to address that. So you'll have three recognitions. So that's really the only change in that area. Under SBDM minutes, you'll note if you look that in the month of January, the middle school did not have a meeting and could not form a forum. They tried on a couple of different occasions and could not do that. So that's why you won't see minutes for them. You'll see under, at this point, we've not heard from anyone who has asked for audience comments. And of course, you all are always entitled to have comments under your section. Under my section, you'll take, be able to look at personnel changes. And then we will walk through, not really walk through, but remind everyone what the strategic plan calendar is, and that begins tomorrow. And it's available for everybody to see. It's every two weeks, starting at four o'clock. We've scheduled five of those and we hope to accomplish the plan in that five-week period, or five-session period. And then a reminder also of the facilities plan, meetings that you all have asked us to schedule. March 22nd at Lancaster, March 23rd at Paintlick, and March 25th at Camp Dick Robinson. Those will all begin at six in the evening. It was in the newspaper this past week, front page. So we'll be blasting again on social media, making sure that information is out there. Next thing that we would address is the treasurer's report. So Stacy?
Okay, if you all look at the smaller sheet, the February financial report, we're going to see a total ending balance for February at approximately $8.9 million. And when we compare that to the prior year in February, we're at about $2.3 million. And as you can tell by looking down below the comparison, about $2 million of that is attributed to the general fund. So if you flip over to the following two pages, I'm just going to go into some little bit of detail about the ones that have the largest variance. Our general fund cash balance is 6.4 million, or I'm sorry, 6.6 million. The result of the increase in funds when compared to last year is due to our COVID relief funds, along with some decreased spending due to virtual learning. Our special revenue fund, the variance noted, is approximately $200,000. And as noted in the past, this balance fluctuates month to month due to changes in grant activity. Our school activity fund was not required to be reported in the prior year, which explains that variance. So that cash balance is $308,000. And then our next largest variance was the food service fund that was down by approximately $293,000 when compared to the prior year. And that coincides with our spend down plan. So our remaining funds, the district activity fund, the capital outlay, the building, construction, debt service, community education and trust funds, they all had minimum, minimal variances when compared to last year. So in addition to this sheet, you also have my monthly financial report that should have notes on it. It just kind of gives you a little bit more detail of each fund if you want to dig in a little bit deeper. That's all I have. I'll be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate all the detailed reporting. You highlight everything.
Thank you. Can you read my hand argumenting better?
Well, I wondered what matches PSB.
Balance sheet.
Balance.
Next thing we'll look at is your bonding potential. And as you all know, we've been waiting for an interest rate change. And you're able to see that the interest rate change on that this month moved us back from $29 million bond to $25 million. And the loan difference really is the, the interest rate. You see it went from a 1.76 to 2.42. And that's the highest percentage that you see on this sheet since they started sharing this information with us. So they'll continue to provide that on a monthly basis, keep informed of where we are relative to that bonding potential. Then you receive bills each month or each week to approve. And we simply place that on the agenda to make sure that we've accommodated what we're supposed to accommodate there. Under the consent agenda, you have the minutes from February's 15th working session and the 23rd regular session, which was a delayed one. We'll ask you to approve the treasurer's report that you just heard and two fundraisers. One for Paintlick Elementary, one for Camp Dick Robinson. The next two items, the first one is approval of the ESER Assurance Funds, or ESER 2 Assurance Funds. It's the amount of money that we've talked about recently in the last few months. We're going to receive about $2.59 million. And in order to receive that, we have to answer some assurances and have a spending plan. If we put those in place, then these funds will be available to us beginning April 1st. So we are actually meeting this week to make sure we have that spending plan. It's not a detailed spending plan that says each penny is going to here. But there are assurances that we will go through and that we will say yes to. And we need, we'll need you all to say that you're agreeing with us that those are things that the district will do. Inside that is a 15%, a 15% setback that KDE has held on to. And if we spend, or I say 15%, they have a setback or a holdback that they have from the ESER 2 funds. And if we spend 85% of our funds on direct services, then we would be eligible for $75 per child that we have based on ADA. So that's $183,000. The only issue that we'll have around that is making sure that we comply with that percentage of 85. It does limit some of the things that you could do once we do that. And I think all of you understand that when we're dealing with money coming from different sources like that, there are limits that are placed on us around that. There could be a point where we would arrive at a spot where we were saying it would be smarter for us to spend money on something that's not a direct service, but at this time, we're not aware of what that would be. And so we're going to say yes to that assurance. If we ever need to come back and change that, we will make you aware of that.
And in order to pay, this money can be spent on?
So this money, based on the federal level, could be spent on a ton of things. At the state level, that's where the pullback has occurred. So as an example of something that could be spent at the federal level, but we can't do it at the state level and count it as a direct service, is work on our air handlers, I mean, on our air units. So if we wanted to put bipolar ionization in each of those, we can do that with these funds. But that won't count as part of the direct services. So that could take your numbers to a spot where you start to push against that 85% or that 15%, depending on how you want to look at it. We can use it for salaries. We can use it for software. We can't use it for hardware. So we couldn't purchase Chromebooks with it, but if there was a software program or package that we wanted, we could do that. Again, we can use it on personnel. We can use it for programs like preschool. We can use it for items like our learning recovery that we're talking about using. And that's where we feel like we'll use a good chunk of the money to go into that area. We'll also look at things that we could do that then might shore up the general fund. If there are some things that we can move over and that we might normally have paid for with the general fund, we may pay for it with this in order to, again, secure the general fund at a higher level. We also know that last week, $1.9 trillion was allocated for what we'll assume will be ESER 3. And we have not received actual numbers. But KDE has suggested that that amount of money that will be coming into the state will be twice the amount of this last one. So if you extrapolate from that, potentially doubling, we could be looking at another $5 million that would come in. We don't know exactly what the limits will be on that. We'll certainly watch that. The ESER 2 money has to be spent by September of 2023. And we believe that if ESER 3 comes out, it will be at the same timeframe. So that amount of money would have to be allocated and used during that block of time.
So it could have been used for all day preschool?
Yes, and we'll address that in a few, just a few minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's good. You're taking it the right way.
Mr. Stone, I was hoping that you would be able to share with us, and you may not have it developed yet, and that's okay, but the learning recovery piece of that, or just a breakdown of how you anticipate that 85% being spent in direct services or otherwise. Will you be able to share with the board a report of the details of that, so that we can articulate that thing?
So once we, once we have some of that defined a little more clearly, we can do that. But I can tell you this, that in three weeks, when we have spring break, we believe that we have three elementary schools that will be in service at that point in time, bringing students in and having staff in to, to support what's going on. Food service will be a part of that, and transportation can be a part of that to offset any challenges that families might have. We believe we'll have middle school providing services as well. We think elementary will be Monday through Thursday, probably 8 to 12, somewhere in that area. I think I'm in the ballpark on that. I think the middle school is Monday through Wednesday. So all of those things I'm describing there will be direct services to students. And that will be where we pull our funding from, is from the ESER money. Then when we roll into Saturday experiences, which we understand, we have students who want to do that. We understand we have staff who are willing to do it. When we roll into the before-school and after-school programs, all of those dollars will come from these ESER dollars. So to tell you what those exact figures are at this point would be really, really hard to do because we're still trying to build it. And you will get this conversation either tomorrow night in the strategic plan or two weeks from tomorrow night.
Mr. Stone? The 2.59 million? Does, does, that is not, that's the second round. The first round, do we have, still have funds in the district?
About $90,000.
From the first round that haven't been expended?
About $90,000.
About $90,000. So that's still be worked with, which is good. I mean, you know?
So we can spend that in a heartbeat on some things that would be well utilized. But yes, one of the things that we did as soon as we got ESER 2 was start looking at what those numbers are. KDE recommends that you spend ESER 1 before you spend ESER 2, but it's not required.
That was what I was getting at, whether there were requirements on whether we had to spend it. And out of these, are you aware of any money still left to be allocated out of the first batch that's a Commonwealth received that was under the governor's purban that might go to education?
Not that I'm aware of. So when we had the December, if you remember, in December, we paid for payroll with funds when they, when we had a shortened amount of money coming in from SEEK and it was replaced by that. We didn't make any money. We didn't lose any money. We just allocated it from a different source. To my knowledge, that was the last chunk of money that was sitting at Frankfurt to be allocated. So at this point, under number one, no.
So if everything goes as promised, we should be securing this. I mean, was I correct? $189,000 if we spend the 85%?
183.
183.
Roughly.
But we're in the ballpark.
Yes.
But, and you, you did, I liked what you said about that's nice money to have if you can get it. But if you have a pressing need and a non-direct, that the money, you may have the pool of money to do that, that's an option also that we'd have to look at, at all, case by case occurrence.
Yeah, the only thing that I would say as an add-on to that is that that would not be money that we sent back. That would just be money that we didn't get added to us. So the 2.9, I mean, the 2.59 is what is allocated and what we have available. And that has zero impact on the 183. The 183 would just be an add-on to that.
That's what I understood. That, that's just an add-on extra for going in a direction that they suggest. Who controls this?
So I would assume.
I mean, in all the state there.
So I would assume that the money we're talking about, that's the holdback, is KDE because they're the ones who've opted to hold that back and make it available. It's a $75 per student allocation if we hit that 85% threshold.
I mean, the allocation of the ESER.
So I don't think, I think it's a flow through.
It's coming from the federal government.
It's a flow through.
But there's some group that has oversight on it, which is, I guess, KDE?
No, I would assume at that point it would be the state budget.
State budget? So that falls to legislature, which?
Okay, I don't think it falls to the legislature. I don't think they get to make a decision around that money. So the, the holdback that we had with ESER 1 was a decision made at the KDE level, my understanding. So if I'm wrong, we can find that out and clarify that for you.
Looking for any stumbling blocks and potential, who to lobby hardest to make sure that everything flows smoothly. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Any others? Okay, let's move on to item M, Mr. Stone.
Capital, there's a capital funds request that we need you to approve. You previously approved a BG 1 allocating about $66,000 for the interior door project at the middle school. We simply now need to do a capital funds request to make that the, the last step along the way to get the money in the right location. So as you see, if you read it, we'll be moving the money from the building fund to the construction fund. So this money was money that came as an add-on to us this year. So this is not general fund money again.
And don't worry, this is all under consent agenda. So we'll take all of this Thursday night if there's any problems there. All right, we move to item 5, action agenda, item A, approved preschool plan for 2021.
So Ms. Convilleton, Ms. Convilleton's going to come and share some stuff with you. But before she does, she's asked us to share something with you. I believe I'm doing this in the right order, correct?
Yes, you are. We're going to hopefully pull at your heartstrings a little bit. So the All-Star preschool teachers and our All-Star preschool students have got a little video for you and with the warning label that you may want to roll preschool once this is done.
So please, you go ahead. If I could.
My favorite thing about preschool, I like to play.
Um, I like to play all of the YouTube kids. And, and I get to go play outside and swim in the water and, uh, and, uh, and swing and have, have to play in our centers and, uh, be good and, uh, have, have a good night. Thank you.
I like to play about preschool. Bye.
Bye.
I like to eat chocolate.
I like wearing my leather with my sign.
I like watching YouTube with my sign. I like playing with my sign.
Play with toys every day.
I love, um, um, I love, um, the playground.
Hi Dana. Dana, what is your favorite thing about preschool?
Riding the bus and playing with my friends.
Riding the bus and playing with your friends?
Seeing Miss Dillard and Jane.
Seeing Miss Dillard and Miss Dana. Oh, we love it when you come to preschool, Dana. Actually, what is your favorite thing about preschool?
Drawing for my friends.
Drawing things for your friends? Okay.
And helping.
And helping your friends, learning to help. What, what do you like to do the best, the, the most at school?
Play with toys.
Play with toys? And what else? Playing with your friends, with all the other kids. Okay. You smile. Show me you're pretty, beautiful. Oh, you're so pretty. Thank you, Mina. Hi Kay. What is your favorite thing about preschool?
Cutting out the letter E.
Cutting out letters, the letter E? Okay, learning to cut. Go ahead.
My favorite, um, at preschool, it's, it's hugging Miss Dillard.
Hugging Miss Dillard. Oh, how's Dana?
Um, I like cooking. I like eating.
Your favorite thing about, is about schools eating?
Yeah.
Okay.
I like about the letters and the signs and also going outside. And playing on the park and going on the slide.
Good thing, what, what I did in there, so to play with them when, do you remember when it was in there?
Yes, you. So you like playing with your friends. Tell me what you like about preschool.
I like to play about, I like to play with my best friend. I just like them and I love them, but I like playing with them.
Tell me what you like about school. What's your favorite part of coming to school?
Learning.
Learning?
Yeah, and playing.
And playing.
I like playing.
Now Miles, tell me some of the things you like about preschool.
I like school.
You like, what do you like about school?
I find teachers.
What do you do at school?
Play.
Write your name and write your name?
I'm good at coding.
Hello everyone. I love playing with my giraffe. They're so fun to play with and I'm so happy. I love it. And I love everything. I love a giraffe. Bye.
So I hope that touched at your heartstrings a little bit, that was an excellent video, they worked hard on that. This is my third year here in Garrett County, so when I was hired, whatever year since I've been here, we have talked about the opportunity for full day preschool, yes, I'm sorry if you can look at the red folder in front of me, there's some, I'll get to that. But in fact, when I was, the year I was hired, we were that close to doing full day preschool, but the funding was pulled from our partner, not by their fault. So when I look back in years before that, at board meetings, it's always been mentioned, but we've never been able to do it, why? Funding. But I'm gonna leave that to the end, okay? When we talk about, well, let's look at the folders first, I just want to let you know what's in there. The proposal plan is in there, as well as two support letters. One is from the Community Action Council Head Start, which we partner with, and the Kentucky Department of Education's Berea Regional Training Center preschool, which is the Assistant Director for State Preschool. Gives you a little bit more research about preschool, all the way back to the 1960s, and how effective full day is. This is something we discussed back in July 2019, I gave you some research then. But feel free to read all that, if you have any questions later on, feel free to contact me. There is also a copy of the preschool community parent survey that we conducted. We got a hundred and thirty-eight responses out of that, and we'll talk about that shortly. So what I do, I've got some data from the Community Action Council. April, Datko Mullins is the Associate Director for Head Start, and is in charge of our area. We had the opportunity, as you know, the last two years, to do full day preschool two rooms at Lancaster, in collaboration with Head Start. So some of the number, the data that she gave me last week was overwhelmingly wonderful. The daily attendance average rate for those kids was ninety-five percent. But get this, the kindergarten readiness for these full day classrooms was ninety-three percent, using our teacher strategies goal assessments. Last year, last school year, we don't know our results from the kindergarten readiness test yet. This great year, COVID's caused a lot of issues with that. Our testing's done, our kindergarten teachers have been excellent with that. Last year's results district-wide, we had forty-seven percent that were kindergarten-ready at age four. Statewide, it was fifty-one, so we have improvement. And while we're looking at this, and I'll mention it again, this is, of course, an early intervention program. There's a lot of tenants to making a preschool program effective. The only one we don't have is full day. That's what we don't have, we have the teachers, we have the curriculum, we have everything else, it's excellent. We're a five all-star program, and always have been, five out of five stars. Not a lot of districts can say that. That's how good our program is, thankful to our teachers and all the support we get from you all, and the administrators in the building, and the parents in the community. But when you look at the survey, there's a lot of little questions there, but again, I'll let you look at that too. If you have any questions tomorrow, tonight, or whenever, just let me know. But a hundred and thirty-eight responses. So it's the very last question, we said, if we provided full day preschool Monday through Thursday, would you send your child? Eighty percent overwhelmingly said yes. So that made me start thinking, let's go look at the census for Garrett County. Two thousand and nineteen census, sixty-seven point four percent of Garrett County residents work outside of this county, and they have a thirty-five minute travel time. Six percent of the population Garrett County are children under the age of five. Where are, I mean, this program is needed, just looking at that data. We talk about, we talked about this before, and all of you know how early the brain development starts, and we're looking at the structural and functional development of kids, it starts now. But the biggest thing about that is, you know how we always talk about closing the gap? This is when you close it, because this is when the gap starts at age three. If you have a highly effective full day preschool program, with all those tenants in place, we can close that gap by fifty percent. That's, I mean, that should be good enough right there to say, hey, we need to do something. But something else we went over before was, research says we can save seven dollars on average for every one dollar invested into early education, but I think I like this better, you can expect a thirteen percent return on investments, which is better than the stock market. Advantage is a full date, I'm gonna kind of read from this list, because there's a lot of them. Free and reduced price lunch preschool students had higher kindergarten readiness rates by approximately fifteen percentage points. Preschool students receiving special education services, six percent percentage points higher. Kindergarten readiness rates for state-funded students receiving free and reduced lunch or special education services, twice as high in kindergarten readiness as those staying at home. Among the free and reduced lunch students with a prior setting of preschool alone, a slightly larger share of African-American students were ready for kindergarten than white students. This is an important data point, as further down the line of school, we know there are significant achievement gaps in those groups. The average rate of kindergarten readiness in districts with more than sixteen hours of scheduled preschool per, preschool time per week is thirteen percentage points higher than districts with less than twelve, and we're at twelve. Full day preschool has no rapid teaching. So instead of forty kids, where you have twenty in the AM, twenty in the PM, you have twenty all day, because that's your cap, okay? Which means you're gonna develop more meaningful interactions, you're gonna be able to pull some off groups, you're gonna do more interventions, you're gonna be explored at school, and really be kindergarten-ready. Children who attend full day early intervention programs do better in school, they find good jobs, and they have successful careers. And here's a good one. Taxpayers receive a high average return on investments in high-quality full day preschool with savings in areas like improved educational outcomes, increased labor productivity, and reduction in crime. So the bottom line, what we're looking at, is full day, high-quality, early intervention program, that's also a post-COVID recovery program. So in closing, here's our plan. It would be two full day preschool rooms at Paint Lake Elementary, two full day preschool rooms at Camp Dick Elementary, one full day preschool room at Lancaster Elementary, and the two full days they already have there from Head Start will be moved to GEC over the summer, as we have talked about the past couple of years. So we have the two early Head Start programs down there, so the two full day Head Start collaboration rooms will be down here as well. So we have one full day at Lancaster, two full day state-funded at Paint Lake, two full day state-funded at Camp Dick. So that requires an additional two teachers and five preschool teachers. We have to have an additional, I'm sorry, perieducators, instructional assistants, because you need extra according to Kentucky guidelines, because you have to have one adult with every ten kids, so they need naptime, of course. Your other instructional assistants, teachers need breaks, et cetera. So when I look at other counties and discuss with them, that are full day, but which is about half in the state of Kentucky, this is what they do as well. We're saving over a hundred thousand dollars if we eliminate midday transportation. Additional cost to go full day with the proposal I just made is three hundred and eight thousand dollars. That's additional cost. With sixty-two thousand of that just being a one-time cost, because we have to furnish, equip the two new rooms, which also includes the content materials, the curriculum, et cetera. So a total of five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for next year, which is what we would like to do, begin next year at twenty-one twenty, and then four hundred and ninety-four for twenty-two twenty-three. Esther funds, Ms. Stacy Coffey checked, the course preschool is a direct service, it will be covered for two years. So when we look at that, at the end of two years, we can meet back, let's see if it's sustainable on its own, can we fund itself now, and hopefully it can if we build this program like I hope we can, which will have to do a heck of a lot of advertising, and we'll go door-to-door, do whatever we have to do, and Head Start will help us do that as well. And hopefully twenty-two twenty-three, Head Start will also possibly, which is the plan, hopefully, we can do it, will be able to allocate additional spots, which means additional revenue from Head Start for us, too. So hopefully, we can build a program, and it will be able to fund itself. And that's for math.
I'm just gonna figure, if that hundred and thirty-eight, let's say they have one preschool kid, and eighty percent of them said they would send their kid, that would be about a hundred and ten children.
Now, these are, our parents, of course, that are past, present, or future. So we don't know how many of them actually have, you know, the current kids. But all of them that answered from the comments that I looked at were past, present, or future parents of preschool.
Well, where I'm going with it is, the two, Paint Lake, two at Camp Dick, and one at Lancaster Elementary.
Right, because technically, we'll already have three full days at Lancaster, because of the two Head Start rooms. So you have forty spots for Head Start, and a hundred spots for the state-funded rooms, so a total of a hundred and forty spots.
I guess where I'm going with that, we do have the space.
By doing this, yes, that's why, right now, we only have one classroom that's staying full day, you know, that will be full day at Lancaster, because we don't know about the room over there. We can switch that up the next year if we need to, but we'll, we gotta start somewhere.
Sounds good.
Yes, sir.
Since you and Brandon spoke to this, I'll bring, I will place it out a little bit. You talked about two classrooms here, and two classrooms there, and one classroom, and another one. Those classrooms are already empty and vacant. Are you gonna have to move children from one school to another school to open up classrooms to make room for this new program?
I would hope not, no.
That's all I'm saying, not hoping.
Well, let me, let's back up, what exactly are you asking? Because Paint Lake, yes, we've spoken to the principals of all three elementary schools. The Lancaster room, we're already moving, two rooms are gonna be vacant, because two rooms are moving here. And you're only keeping one room there for full day. So Camp Dick, yes, they have another room, actually, the kindergarten room was the preschool room, so the kindergarten room will be moving a little bit on down in the hallway.
But it's a place to play.
Exactly, and Paint Lake is the same thing. We have some special ed teachers that will end up sharing a room, and that's fine. This is important. I shared a room most of my career as a special ed teacher, most of us do, because we're usually out in the classrooms, because we try to promote co-teaching.
So they'll be staying in the regular special ed classroom?
Who's they?
Those special ed students that we have at Paint Lake?
No, that's all according to their IEP, we don't dictate that, the IEP dictates that.
The rooms built for special ed students.
No, the rooms built for all students, the rooms built for all students, no, sir. This is simply where we have one teacher in one room, one teacher in another room. Basically, if they do resource, if they do co-teaching, that all works out. We do this in every school, in every district. We're not talking about the modest severe disabled room. We're talking about the learning of behavior disorder room. Now, it's where you're going, that's not what we're talking about, that's completely different. Does that help?
Because we've had some problems with that before, because...
I know we have, no, that room's not moving, I can guarantee you one hundred percent, that room is fine where it's at.
Those children do not like a lot of change.
That's exactly right. No, that, what you're talking about...
The teachers in there have formed wonderfully.
Yes, they have, thank you, and I hope they hear that tonight, I hope they're on here listening to that, because they need a lot of praise. Our MSD teachers are fantastic. That's...
That's helped too.
And I hope they hear that, too.
Do keep an eye on what's going on.
I know you do, but that's what, where he's coming from, he was afraid that it was actually the modest severe disabled room, what we call the MSD room, with our modest severe disabled kids, that's not the case, at all. That room has finally been set up and running beautifully, and we will not change that. This is the learning of behavior disorders.
This year's been a little challenging, but I think they seem to lean toward virtual learning in that school, in that, in the classrooms in each school that have that.
Right.
They do a lot of that anyway, so...
Yes, yes, in the classroom.
In some instances, I think it's been a blessing to them, because they seem to have made significant progress over this year.
We have had several kids actually do quite well in virtual learning, you're right. So he's just, he's advocating for the modest severe disabled kids.
We are making improvement, and I didn't want it interrupted.
No, that's not gonna be interrupted, that I can promise you.
That's great, that's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
How many classrooms are in this building presently, two, either two?
They're the two early Head Start rooms, that's zero through three.
Oh, zero.
Zero through three, yes, and you guys are very welcome to come visit those classrooms. It can be a little while at times that you can see the preschool rooms, but I promise, they're learning all the time.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, item number B is to approve salary schedule for Director of Transportation.
As part of the change in personnel, we received a retirement letter from our current Director of Transportation, and since he is leaving, we would like to return this to the classified salary schedule. You no longer have that in your classified salary schedule, so we have to add it in. So what we created is an opportunity for you to look at what that schedule would look like, and if you approve it, then we will add that to the classified salary schedule for the Director of Transportation moving forward. That'll be the request that we make.
Why was it not part of our classified salary schedule that we already have approved?
Because you don't have that position.
That position.
You had an administrator in that position.
But the position title was classified, so I'm a little confused about that. Even though we hired a certified employee to fill it...
Let me see if I have it here.
I thought I found it at home, and I was gonna ask that question. Why were we creating, because our food service director doesn't have a separate salary schedule.
Can you scroll left? It disappeared.
Yeah, it is, because I'm gonna go get the salary schedule if I can. So if I'm incorrect, I'm happy to look at that. When I go to Transportation, I don't see a Director of Transportation under that area. This was the salary schedule you approved for the twenty-twenty-one school year. I can't speak to anything.
It was in the twenty, it was in the previous one, I think.
I was gonna say, I can't, I couldn't speak to that one, I'm speaking to the current one, you don't have that.
And Mr. Mayor does, was moved latterly from principal.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying...
And he...
I understand how we got where we are, I just don't know what happened to the already approved classified salary schedule for the transportation supervisor. Because it was there, I don't know at what point it got moved or lost, but on a previous salary schedule for classified positions, it was there. Because I questioned why we had a certified, why we were paying a certified employee when that position was a classified position, and why we were, why the district was being expensed. A certified salary when we had a classified position listed as a classified salary schedule.
So I don't have an answer for you relative to that, it's probably an issue that happened prior to. All I'm telling you is, in your current one, we don't have that position listed. And so in order to post, we've not posted the position, because we want to be able to attach the salary expectations that an individual would have with that. So that's why we'll ask you on Thursday to approve the schedule.
How does this schedule align with like the food service? Because that would be another, what's the, we've got a maintenance supervisor and a food service supervisor, so...
So again, I didn't compare internally what we looked at, or other Directors of Transportation, as we would look, if you asked us to look at somebody else's salary, we wouldn't necessarily compare internally to what somebody is making in another title. We would look outside of the district to see what that would cut out of line.
The superintendent that time had moved Scotty to the superintendent's decision, and he would have had to take in a huge salary, I can't remember who that details of it, but...
He did other duties besides just Director of Transportation, also buildings around at the time.
Well, that wasn't really my question at all, my question was just why we needed to create another salary schedule when we already have approved a salary schedule for the classified positions. But that was my question, is why did it not already fall in the classified salary schedule that was approved? Why did we need to create a different one?
And the only answer I have for you is, it's not in the one that you approved.
Throw a little screen and set that down, huh?
Sure.
There you go, thank you.
I believe what he's saying is, I don't fully understand your question, is it moved from a classified to certified because of that circumstance, it being a certified salary person. And now that he's retired, he suggests we move that.
I understand that.
Okay.
See, I think where she's coming from, she's seen before, and I apologize, I don't remember seeing it, that there had been an existing already classified position about that position. She's trying to eliminate any discrepancies that there may be, so there won't be any conflict. It may be something we need to do a little bit of research on, you know, to look into and see, and just, as Mr. Stoll said, there wasn't anything prior to this, this is a new beginning, and we, I guess we need to decide on this, if this is a new beginning, do we adopt this?
Probably see what the summary schedule was paid to the Director of Transportation, or who was over transportation before. Well, I do know who that was. Well, there was, originally, there was something, I don't know whether there was a policy really, or a schedule, salary schedule, for that person, but I do know who it was one time. Well, I think probably a couple of them, we remembered one.
Right, but, and I see where Mr. Stoll's coming from, too, is because that was several years ago, things changed. And we had a different circumstance, circumstances brought Scotty into that position. So I guess where I see Mr. Stoll coming from, and I'm totally on board with it, it's a new beginning, so let's start this new beginning.
I don't see that we have any other choice but to do it, because it's not on there. So the question is, there's not...
But I see exactly what you're saying.
I wanted to make sure it wasn't already on there, and I had seen it in previous classified salary schedules that we had approved, and I didn't realize it wasn't on this one that we just approved for this year, so...
Didn't want to try to eliminate redundancy.
Everybody, everybody good? All right, the next item we see is to approve cafeteria table bids.
So we asked you to wait the last board meeting, because we wanted to see if we could save some money for the district. So as we went through the process, we double-checked what the bids looked like, things of that nature, for fifty cafeteria tables for Fair Mill, for Lancaster Elementary, and for CBR. And after we checked, double-checked, looked at references, made sure that what was responded to at the RFP, School Outfitters was the company that came in with the best bid. I did not say the lowest bid, I said the best bid. And so that's the group that we will ask you to approve. Those will be funds from the food service spin-down plan that we've been utilizing. This is not a general finding request. I will scroll this...
Where, oh, you, I'm sorry, you have pages.
Oh, no, I was just gonna scroll this up so that you all could see. There is your final bid.
Ninety thousand, five thirteen?
Yes, sir.
I have a question, since we're looking at doing so much for Scotland, there's great vision for this building, too. We did have cafeteria in this building, and it is being used for some services that are, to some of the people that are here. And if anyone would like to go look at the condition of it, is there any plans for... We're doing, we're doing a lot of things for a lot of different cafeterias, but it seems like this one's being left hung out to dry, and if we're gonna fill this building up, you know, it's been a long time, many, many years ago, when we went to the cafeteria and took, put it back to our rooms and ate. I think if we have the space available, and we're gonna have quite a few children over here.
Yeah, I would love, in fact, Brad and I have talked about that for three years.
These are hand-me-downs from everywhere, and were here when the building was originally built, and then as they followed in disrepair, if somebody had wanted to do a suit, and that spot or needed something, they just kind of got delegated over to this building. We have full operational, I mean, the facilities for a full operational, I don't know whether it would operate now as it is, but we've had in the past.
Brad and I have spoken about that for probably the past three years, but I also know that Mindy Morrow has been talking about it, so I'm sure we could ask her and see where she's at with that.
Might be interesting to look and see what, how much of the, how much room we have for safe spin-down and our excess funds to keep us from being over the limit in possibilities. That probably would be a good use if, like Head Start is in here, and there are other people are in here.
So we'd be glad to look at that, we'll also have to look at the sustainability of that, because it won't just be a purchase of materials or an upgrade to the facility, maybe talking about personnel as well. And so you're gonna have to calculate what that will look like, so we'll look at this number story and let you know what that is. That spin-down plan won't be a part of that.
Okay, well, I'm asking for, but if we're gonna have kids over here and teachers teaching, they deserve to be treated the same as other teachers and students in other facilities.
If I could add something, and this was Brad's idea, I don't know if you remember this. He did mention, you know, if we could fix that up, I mean, it would be a great rental spot in the community.
It's been used for that in the past. That's the reason I probably did it, because, you know, it has potential. And like I've always said, if you can't do something for all kids, or a large majority, you don't need to do, you know, don't need to leave, need to leave groups out, is what I'm trying to say, I mean, if we've got kids over here, they need to have the same privileges, the same things as other students. It should be a step down to come over here and go to Head Start, preschool, whatever, it develops that too.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, item D is to approve or copy your contract bid.
Senator RNP was released, you ought to be able to see now the responses that we have right now. We've done quite a bit of checking on this, Chris is available to answer questions around this if you would like to. Currently feel comfortable with the decision around ProSource, it ends up being the lowest bidder. See what the estimate that we have for that, it's about a twenty thousand dollar savings to the district, based on the current copy of the contract that we have. So if you have any questions for Chris, he's happy to answer.
So he's been a really good hagler for the district and managed to pull several rabbits out of the hay as far as cutting expenses and getting the best quality amount of money we had to spend, so. I, I don't have a problem with his, with what he recommends for the fact.
Chris, I've got a question. He's got crossover and then Conica, and then there's a Conica over there.
So there were, there were eight respondents. Four of them were direct from the uh, the manufacturer, so you see Toshiba, uh, Rico, Conica and Canon, all of them responded offering their own product. Uh, you then had Schaffner, Commonwealth Technologies, uh, Daniloff's Equipment and ProSource. And what you see below them is the manufacturer that they offer. So ProSource is also offering a Conica machine, so the machines will be a Conica device.
So these same things, we went directly from the company?
Basically, I think there was some slight difference in the model that they, that each of them proposed. But I gave everybody, here's what we use. The nice part was with the last one where we started using Paper Cut. I was able to give them, I only gave them 27 months of data, because I cut out COVID. Because I was like, this data's, yeah, not super helpful. I wish, of course, that's one of the air killers, being one-to-one, I wish we had better data on that. But of course, we went one-to-one at the beginning of last year, and then COVID in the middle, and those numbers are shocking.
Well, I just asked, I just happened to see that, and I'm just wondering, I agree with the query, you make the recommendation.
Let me ask you this, uh, how about uh, service? Do they, this, they provide service, because we know they're gonna break down. Any machine you put in here is gonna have, needs your maintenance.
And that, that's part of the RFP, is that they're uh, this is, yeah, this is the cost to have it and uh, follow it up on references and all that. So it's not a company that we've worked with before, but they do have other school districts that spoke highly of them, a couple of other municipalities and universities. So, and they got pretty good reviews on that, so. They sound like a good shop, and Rico's the one we're currently with. And they've been good to us. Uh, before that, we were with Conica and Alton, and they, and service-wise, they were good to us. And, and both companies were, service-wise have been good to us. This uh, the cost is kinda the, is the driving factor. Basically, they're offering us a lower cost per page.
$2,000 is a pretty good savings.
Exactly.
Anybody else? Okay. Item number E is to approve additional swim coach, Mr. Stoll.
This year, you added a swim team, made it official, but we did not ask you to add a coach at that point. The high school, middle school looked at uh, checking with students to see if there's an interest moving forward, and it appears to be an interest. So if we're gonna continue, we would need a coach in that spot. We're asking for a $2,500 salary for that position, half allocated to the female side, half allocated to the male side, one coach.
Any questions? All right, the item F is to approve pay application two for the middle school latercom project.
$16,920 for work completed on the project, we recommend that you approve that.
Okay. Item number G, approve pay application number five for the middle school exterior door project.
This one's an $11,400 one for work completed by Shiller. We recommend you approve that, since the work's done.
Okay. Item number H is to change order number two for middle school exterior door project.
So every time we do an ex, uh, a change order, we always have to make sure that you understand the cost side of that. Uh, this is for the interior doors, and so two things. One is, we already have allocated $66,000, we talked about it a few minutes ago. In the, the capital funds request that we were talking about, it was this amount of money. Again, money that's not uh, coming out of the general fund, money allocated from the state, that you've decided to use it for this purpose. Uh, so we need to add that into part of the change order, so it's official. But we also need to add to that the delay that will occur before we can do the work on the interior piece. So the decision was made that the interior work should be done during the summer, when students and staff are not there. So the end of this project now with the add-on will not happen until roughly August. That's not when it starts, that's when it will begin.
Okay. Questions? All righty, item number I, approve items for junk recycling.
So Chris is back available, if you need him for this, we provided you with a list of possibles. Uh, we may add a couple of other things to that, uh, that aren't here, but they will be in the same type of item. There won't be anything that's changed there. Uh, by you all doing this, it allows Chris to go through the right process to eliminate this in the right way. You'll probably get a little bit of uh, income for it, but it would be a large amount for that.
I did realize, can go back to the other one real quick, could, and, well.
The Conica, I mean the.
Yeah, we don't have to go back to it, just, there was one thing I forgot to mention, because both of these require specific motions. They require the motion to be made in a specific way. Uh, the copier bid needs to be approved pending KDE approval. Because it, because the lifespan of the contract, it will be over $100,000. Any $100,000 contract has to go through a special KDE approval process. It'll go through our attorney, and then it'll go through the office finance administration.
Thursday, you'll have that motion, we'll have to motion for you, subject to what you need to cover.
So yeah, it's just not a, just to make sure we don't enter into a contract that KDE says we can't without. And then this one is similar to asking the phone system to be declared surplus. This is to declare this stuff junk, the difference being surplus gets bid off, junk can be recycled through the state contract. Uh, the one thing that I didn't mention, I will get, um, that's not in that list, that I'll get added, is I didn't think to add all the broken bits of Chromebook that we have swapped out over the years. I'm not sure that actually needs to be declared anything, because it's, you know, it's cracked screens and keyboards and that, so, but it does need to be.
File 13, things that normally go on file 13.
Yeah, except a lot of those have hazardous materials, so the nice part with this contract is, because this is, this will go, there's a state contract vendor for e-waste, and they will take care of all the hazardous materials and dispose of it properly.
So we'll add that, it's gonna be able to see the whole process, that I think Chris is talking about.
Okay.
Okay.
So what you're saying is that you want permission to throw this stuff away, or can we actually give some money for it?
Well, no, we're recycling it.
We're recycling, and that's what I'm saying, you'll get a little bit of money potentially, it won't be a large amount of money, yeah.
It, this stuff is, wait, this stuff is waste product, it has no value to be resold, therefore we'll go with the e-waste contract. Whereas, again, like the phone system, there are people that will bid on that to, to take it away. So we'll get a little more for the phone system, I'm still working through that process. I really just need to pull the trigger and do it. Whereas this stuff is mostly, is either non-functional because it's broken, or non-functional because it is so old that it doesn't circle back.
Thanks, sir.
In other words, two guys in a truck pull up and take all the junk and load it up and haul it off.
Pretty much.
I think, well, last year or year before last, we had a.
Yeah, we do one about, we do one about every year. I guess I should note the other big parts with the, the uh, the state contract is the data destruction clause. That's another big part, it's not just the hazardous materials, but also their hard drives. That sh, they shouldn't have stuff on them at this point, but we get a, they confirm the data destruction and that kinda stuff, so. There's a lot of advantages to doing it this way.
We're good.
You done? All right, item J, approve calendar amendment.
So inadvertently, a calendar had six holidays in it, and uh, something I should have caught, uh, missed it. We talked about what that could lead to, could we allow six holidays? And KRS 1581070 says, nope, you can't, so we've got to fix the calendar. So what we will recommend is that we add May 28th and May 31st, but we'll ask you to give our principals a lot of latitude on how they execute that. Our staff has known the end date for school for a long time, and probably made some plans, particularly the one that rolls beyond that weekend. And we have spring break still coming, we have add-ons that you could do at the end of the end day. So we think that there are easy ways to address it, but we do have to make this amendment to the calendar. So we have posted that calendar for you to review, if you haven't seen it, uh, we'll get you a copy if you need to get a copy. But we've returned it to the four holidays that are supposed to be there, and we'll ask you to approve that change.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions? Then we've gone to item six, darn it.
But actually, you came to item four on the other agenda, I believe.
Oh, yeah.
Right, go back to your coats and tights agenda, that's Thursday's agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me.
Just so you don't call it that item.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 don't be sorry, just get it right.
Yes, please correct that in peace.
No, there's no minutes to correct, we've gotta move that thing.
I will move for adjournment.
Don't come around, Lou.
Second.
Your heart's seconded, any questions? All in favor, raise your hand, we're adjourned.
So I missed this, who, who, who moved, you know, for the agenda to be approved?
I thought we approved it.
At the beginning.
He made it.
Was that?
I made, I made you.
Okay, and you were the second?
Mr. First, second and both.
You replaced, Dr. Brown, and it was the second.
I don't have to.
All right.
Thank you all.